Okay, we're ready. Let's all stand for the Pledge of Legions, please.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Vice President Daley.
Here.
Trustee Clements.
Here.
Trustee Henderson.
Here.
Trustee Schwartz.
Here.
And Trustee Champlin is absent.
Okay, tonight we're having a special meeting. We're having a special presentation of the Haldane Strategic Plan for 2015 to 2020. So I will hand it over to Dr. Bowers.
Well, thank you, and I hope you don't mind if I stand. I don't want to be in front of the presentation itself. And I am going to be one of a number of presenters that will be sharing the information that we've collected over the last year with you tonight. So, Robert, if you could move about, there we go. So, actually, I see a number of people who are here that took part in the strategic plan, so I want to start by saying thank you. We know that it was an elongated process, and there was a lot of time and conversation that took place. But actually, I think that when you see the outcome of what we did together, it was certainly worth it, and I think it's just exemplary what we came out with, so thank you. I was thinking about what I wanted to share with you over the weekend, and I have to tell you, I'm really excited that we're presenting this to you tonight. And it's something that really will help us focus and help create the direction of the district as we go through the process. And when you look at it, and when you read the words, and I kind of did some very slow reading, or close reading, as the State Education Department would call it, but I did some really deep thinking while I was reading each one of the goals that we came up with. And if you take one of those goals separately, and you read it, and you think about the enormity of what's in there, and how much it's going to help and benefit kids, I think we did a terrific job. So, where we started. And I apologize if I'm repeating myself, I know that you may have heard this, but if you're just coming in for the first time, you may not. So, the discovery process actually started in the summer of 2014, and it included just about every group within the district. We started out with the administrators and the Board of Education. We talked about who we were as a district then. We talked about where we wanted to go 10 years from now, and we figured out what we needed to include in the conversation in order to get there. And so that the discovery process was that three-step process that helped us figure out who we are, where we're going, and how we got there. When we created a document that included information from all constituent groups, including our students, both high school and middle school, we were able to put together some very specific questions or vision elements of what we want to see and where we want to see things going. And from that, we were able to create some questions that then morphed into the second stage of the discovery process, which we called the strategic planning process. And so as we go through the different steps, the first step with the discovery process was creating the vision and considering the vision elements that we needed to create. We then compiled the vision elements, and we were able to come up with certain questions that would really focus our attention in on where we're going as a school community, as a district, and how we're going to educate kids. From that process, we presented to the board in December, and these four essential questions came out. One was, how can a district ensure continuing excellence in academics and extracurriculars while being fiscally responsible? That's probably one of the biggest jobs of educators today, at least at the district office level, trying to figure out how to maintain what we've always had and then enhance it while we're being very fiscally responsible. And the requirements of what has come from Albany has made that a must. Second question, how can a district ensure that all students think deeply, support their thinking, apply problem-solving, and actively participate as they acquire knowledge? It is a student-based question that really focused in on 21st century skills and metacognition. The third, what supports are necessary to create an environment where the civic and social conditions of learning are infused in all we do? If you watched what happened in the discovery process and you saw the outcomes of the discovery process, one of the prime things that was evident each step along the way was the need for civic and social conditions for learning, making sure that a district provides that and provides the template and the supports that would allow that to occur. And then, how do we use our present structures, whether they be physical or they be metaphors? How do we do that to educate kids well? So, the process, these four questions then drove the process for the strategic plan, and each of these questions was asked and answered by five different groups. And we had the five subcommittees looking at the lens of the essential questions, and it was, we had extracurriculars, we had financial, we had our, am I going too quickly? I'm getting back. Okay. Okay, so we had five subcommittees that looked at these four questions in a specific lens. We had our teacher, teaching and learning, college, career and citizenship readiness, our facilities committee, our fiscal committee, and our extracurriculars. And all of these five subcommittees answered all four questions and came out with something that was along the same theme, but slightly different based on where we were going. So, the question we were asking is, what is a strategic plan? What do we know where we are, where we want to be, and how we get there? And this is now the touchstone, which will help focus us as we move forward. At this point, we are going to welcome our administrators. I think we just went over these. There we go, okay. So, beyond the subcommittee activities, we talked about the four essential questions, and what we're going to be presenting to you tonight are the goals. We actually came out with 10 goals, and I'll talk a little bit about how those goals were wordsmithed in a little while. But we are, we're at the point where we have the questions, we have the visions, we have the goals, and then the next four boxes, measures, resources and support, action steps, and projected results, will be the living document in the conversations that take place over the next five years. Okay, and I think we're ready to invite our committee leaders up for conversations.
Whether we have the flexibility to do what larger districts might be able to do.
I think the major overall theme of what we discussed was really using the facilities and resources that we currently have, like the garden and the trail and the pond, and really incorporating them into the learning process. Since we have PBL, the project-based learning really has kids hands-on, so using the things that we have, using the resources that we have, and just integrating it into the lessons. Then this way, we're moving the kids straight into world experiences, application, which goes along with the rigor and what Common Core is really moving towards. And then, again, we connected it to the learning profile, possibly individualized, and overall also just needing to redefine assessment and making sure the community understands what we mean by rigor assessment, how we're going to show it, and things like that.
You're just bringing it back to rigor for a second, because it's really, you know, this is a lot of the discussion we've had before, and there is, we need to think about how do we achieve that balance through these great PBL projects, experiential learning, which are always the things that you remember as an adult as your most meaningful learning experiences. But the students still have to be held accountable for memorizing the parts of the plan. You know, if they want to be, if you want to be a doctor, you still have to go through biology and memorize everything before you get to college. I mean, even in my own experience, I'll never forget getting to college and realizing I wanted to be an English major, and I had never had a writing experience that was even close to what was expected at the college level. Just completely unprepared. So, you know, these are all things, like these, you know, it's not so exciting to write a research paper, it's not so exciting to have to memorize, you know, the parts of the body, but all of those things have to be, it has to be, it has to be the priority in a way, and I mean, you know, the math has to be the priority. If we're committed to the math, that has to come first, and then we have to figure out how to support it.
Traditionally, rigor has always been something quantifiable, and it's something that we measure, so the question is, as we're redefining how we want to teach and go about education, we're having trouble grappling with this notion of rigor, and what is it redefined?
Theoretically, yeah, Common Core standards are to, and PBL and, you know, authentic experiences should go common, you know, hand in hand, right? But it comes back to your question, is how do you measure and assess these things, right? And so, the issue is that folks that have created all of these things realize that, you know, a lot of the things that we value in society and the things that are really truly rigorous in the way that you described it are not measurable in the same ways that we're accustomed to measuring learning. And so, the new Common Core assessments are theoretically closer to measuring those things that we really value and measuring rigor, but again, we'll always be limited by a standardized exam. A standardized exam doesn't measure something like a portfolio assessment would, or like project-based learning would, or our discovery night that we're doing in the fall, or last year's science STEM night. That's where you really see rigor, is when students have an opportunity to perform and exhibit their thinking and their understanding or...
Okay. So, teaching and learning. You heard some, heard and saw some very intelligent, very thoughtful members of our committee, and I want to just acknowledge their contribution. Mr. Rahm, of course, Jennifer Daley, Danielle Peasey, a member of our staff, Jill LaTear, a member of the CSEA. We had a number of parent representatives, Sandy McKelvey, Jalissa Tomozawa, Mindy Krasmian, Bonnie Carmassino, Danielle Keller, Robbie Smith, and we had a community member, Judy Meyer. So, really, a sincere thanks to all of those who contributed, and it was really quite a privilege. All I really did was just facilitate the conversation, because there was so much rich conversation and discourse around really looking at these authentic, real-world experiences for our students and having opportunities and building on opportunities for them to make real-world connections. And you saw, you know, certainly excerpts from the footage that reflected that, and as we continue to move forward with PBL work and really redefining and rethinking how we define rigor and how we're assessing student learning as part of that work that we're doing, that really provides more authentic, student-centered experiences for our children. Brian's going to pick up there.
Thank you. Good evening, everybody. I just want to add only one thing, and that is that, you know, I tremendously enjoyed this process and the opportunity to work with the folks that came to the table with the Teaching and Learning Committee. And if you know anything about particularly the parents that serve on this committee, there's a tremendous, tremendous amount of expertise there, and we're very fortunate to have that level of expertise in the field of education, in our parent representatives that were serving at that table. And I think what made it the most pleasant experience for me is that everybody who sat down at that table was working from an asset model rather than a deficit model, and the question wasn't about, you know, what's wrong with Haldane and how do we fix it? The question was, what are all the great things that are going on at Haldane already, and how do we build upon those to get to the next level? So, like I said, it was a pleasure and a privilege really to work with those folks, and I'm real proud of what came out as a result.
Or what do you want?
I'm going to go before the video, but as Brian and Brent just said, I'd like to thank the committee members first. I had the same experience with my committee in terms of just the knowledge and the willingness to share and the willingness to discuss. I think one thing that was great about my committee is I really felt like the people in the room represented the entire population of the people in Cold Spring. I felt like it was well-balanced, and there was a great representation of our community at large, who came to the table maybe with different types of learning experiences for themselves or their children, and it was a great conversation. So, with that said, Evan, thank you. Evan was on the committee. Melissa Seidman was our HFA rep. Lori Hyatt was the CSEA rep. Ms. Carrie Ferry was a parent rep. Paul Tomozawa. Peggy Clemmons. Danielle Pack McCarthy. Judy Farrell. Katie DiMarco. And Melissa Skanga were also on the committee. I tried to narrow it down into three things that we really spent a lot of time talking about. One of them was aligning curriculum K-12 to be sure we're meeting the needs of all learners, college, career, and citizenship-ready. So, we spent a lot of time talking about that. We also spent a lot of time talking about soft skills. And Brian, and in the video you saw, things that are hard to measure, things that are hard to assess. We spent a lot of time talking about that. We talked about, how do we create a way to be sure that those things are being taught or our children are leaving with those skills? And we kept going back to the individual learner profile, and we spent a lot of time with that, as opposed to just evaluating the standards within the Common Core, but also evaluating those soft skills. We also talked about learning beyond the school and the school walls, and how we can continue to bring in those learning experiences for our children. So I think you'll see in the video some of this. Another thing I think to mention is, our conversation wasn't just goal-centered, it was strategy-centered. And we were talking a lot about, we started getting into the strategies to help us reach these goals. And I think moving forward, as we continue this process, the conversation we had in that meeting will help us come up with that action plan to actually meet the goals.
We took a look at what we were talking about before we left this room, which was rigor. And we were talking about the structures that are currently in place, and what we're doing here in the school, is it providing enough rigor for our children to leave college, career, and citizenship-ready? So, these are kind of the themes we discussed, and you kind of can see our brainstorming that culminates here. We talked a lot about vertical articulation and professional development time in order to do that K-12 in the areas of math, science, social studies, and really talk about, are we aligned with what we're doing in the elementary school to the middle school and then to the high school? And kind of where are the gaps? And do we have gaps? And where are the places that we could infuse more interdisciplinary work? And if we really had a good handle, I think when the Common Core came in, everybody's getting ramped up and ready and relooking at their curriculum, and now we're kind of have a handle on math, and now it's making sure that it's vertically aligned. We recognize it's very hard to do this and sustain it, and to continue the conversations, you have these great conversations, and then putting it to action and moving forward, you need to be sure that those conversations continue. We just looked at our DRA data for the last 10 years of kids exiting, wasn't 10 years, I'm sorry, last seven years of kids exiting second grade, and where are they in terms of their reading level? And are we, if kids aren't leaving second grade, we're not saying if they're leaving third grade, if they're leaving second grade not reading at level, what is happening? And I think that one of the reasons why we're seeing we're hiring the literacy and the special ed teacher to focus on the primary grades is to ensure that that data that you're talking about, Peggy, that being able to read by the time you're in third grade, if they're not doing that, we've got a major problem. We've got to get all children to be reading on grade level, you know, by that point.
So, we have such an advantage in the fact that they can communicate their needs to each other. So, it allows for ongoing inter collaboration among administrators.
And teachers.
And teachers.
To address the needs.
Amongst K through 12.
Right.
Of every student in the district.
Student needs.
You know, how many school districts can make that comment?
But I feel like here, the structure exists, but in some areas, I think there are holes, like I think there's gaps, like in terms of social needs, in terms of those soft skills. I think that because, because we're so small and because we're stretched thin in terms of social workers, I think that structure exists, but because there's a little bit, you know, of confusion between who's the elementary school social worker, who's the middle school social worker, because they're right there, but then there's a change there, it causes some confusion.
And that was a happy committee. We were just, you know, having a good time there. So appropriately, I was on the fiscal subcommittee, and even though, you know, there were a lot of conversations going on in all the other committees about all of the initiatives and all the things that everyone wanted to do, seemed like every time, our committee always came around to the same solid idea that we were there to support what everyone else wanted to do, but do it in a fiscally responsible way, and instead of just increasing those budget lines, try to find more efficient ways to do things, to reach outside of our campus, and tap all of the, all of the talent that we have outside of our campus, whether it be in the community, neighboring school districts, or, you know, beyond that, and also to try to find other revenue ideas. So, really, the fiscal committee was, saw our role as support to everyone. And I would just like to thank the members of my committee, Peter Henderson, Brian Ogden from the HFA, Lourdes Lafer, PTA president, Laura Hammond, Rob McCullen, and Therese Olson, parents that were also on my committee. Thank you.
We just have to reallocate what we have. So, not everything's going to be free. I'd love that, but it's not going to happen, so we have to just spend our money smart. And that was our budget development theme this year, was smart spending. So, instead of paying for a lot of different services outside, bring them in, take those funds, put them together, and staff the maker space. We have this beautiful space that really isn't being used to its advantage. So, if you staff that, rearranging the furniture, we brought that up, I think four meetings now, we've been talking about new furniture and changing the space, because we know that sitting in rows is not going to deliver the education, the type of education that we want for our students in this day and age. Expanding programs that would benefit the students and increase revenue, so it's like it's almost free.
Brian shared a story about his wife speaking to, was it one of your classrooms? About her personal story and her personal situation, and how it made the, that condition more real to the students, and how they could really wrap their heads around it after having heard her speak live in their classroom, and it just made it, you know, that much more accessible to them, and brought a higher level of understanding than what they had experienced in, you know, in the classroom without that. It enriched it. It enriched their understanding.
Rather than me discussing with them what they are, having someone explain to them what it feels like, and what they go through, and what it's really about, it gives them a connection to some, a real person who they have a connect, some kind of connection with, so it's more real to them, rather than me reading about a, some case study from a textbook. Having an actual human being in front of you saying it to you, explaining exactly what they go through and exactly the emotion behind it, they get the emotional and empathetic idea from it, and it makes it far more, far more realistic to them.
Because we overused the word "real." It was just the experiences, and we really focused on the civic and social conditions, because we said, bringing volunteers into the classroom and guest speakers really made it real for the kids. And we just kept kind of saying that, we all went back to it. But the concept was that making students a part of the process and engaging them in learning, and the people that come in to be guest speakers and to be part of this bureau of speakers, it helped them too.
Basically, I think when we think of extracurriculars, what we decided as a group from the beginning is, what is extracurricular? What are we talking about? You know, when we first think of it, I think a lot of people in our group thought athletics, arts, and music, but we went beyond that. You know, we talked about, we wanted to be K-12-centered. I think that was a good start for us as a group. And then from there, a lot of conversation came about how, basically, I think one of the main things is, how can we not only get K-12 students involved, but how can they be involved in the decision-making of what's being offered? That played a piece, I believe. Communicating what we already have, PTA enrichments, just things of that nature, but making it K-12-centered, I think, was a key to our, to our group, and I thought we did a very good job coming about some great ideas. And actually, I'm well-represented here tonight with our group. I'll run through it. We had John Champlin was the board representative, Andrea McHugh for the HFA, Carol Flamansky for the CSEA, Kathy Gordnier was a parent, these are the parents, Maureen McGrath, Corey Reister, sir, Reece, sir. I knew I said, I knew it was either Reece or I, I apologize, and you just told me five minutes ago, too. Dan Hughes, Catherine Platt, and then our community member was Sean Conway. So, again, I thought they did a great job, and thank you for volunteering your time.
One of the things that we always talked about was that everything we did, we wanted to be child-focused. So, we wanted to know, what do the kids want to learn? What do the kids want to do? Not what do we want to teach them, what do they want to learn? So, we thought, in teaching and learning, the talk was of a student profile, so why not in the student profile, make a portion of it, what do you want to learn this year? How do you want to have fun? And of course, it's going to be different across the age group. We thought, why not have student development days? We have staff development days, why not student development days? Put them in the calendar. We had a question about mandates. Do we have flexibility within mandates? If a student participates in a sport, is there a PE exemption? And how would that impact a student's willingness or not to participate in a sport? Or, or, or music? What are the exemptions? And then, another thing we talked about is the fact that almost every kid on campus has an iPhone, but they don't know how to use them except to do games. And one of the things that families have is a real-time management issue. Moms and dads can't keep track of their kids' activities, and the kids are expecting them to. So, why not have the children use their iPhones for executive functions? Have them learn in an early age, how do you keep a calendar? So, when they're eating their breakfast, this is what I have to do today. Instead of calling their mother at 2:15 and saying, "Mom, I forgot, I have sports today." Put the onus back on the child, because the families are already really, really maxed out. And last, but certainly not least, was facilities. We really feel our facilities are inadequate. We don't have enough, we maybe have enough classroom space, but we don't have enough gym space. We don't have enough just flexible space that can be used for music or art. After-school is a real scramble to schedule, it's a nightmare. There are no after-school elementary sports to speak of at all, and that's because, part of the reason, we don't have the facility.
It's difficult trying to share that and make everything as high quality as we all want it to be, all the programs.
What about, since we, since everybody keeps coming back to community over and over and over again, what about shared space within the community that could be kind of like a, for overflow, in terms of when we needed indoor space for shows or concerts or things like that? I mean, I know there isn't a gym, an indoor gym within the community, but I know they just sold the VFW hall, right?
Well, Phillips Town Rec has a gym, but at the time...
Well, Phillips Town Rec has a gym, but the time you get your kids down there.
And they have their own liability, but they haven't.
Like, do you guys feel like we need more organization and how, and the planning that goes around how they're leveraged?
I think we need an addition to this building.
And we're going back to you.
Yeah, we really don't.
All right, here it comes. Get the camera ready.
I'm sorry, and I said it, I'm not a board member. And I'm an empty nester, and I.
No, I agree. I completely agree with you.
You don't have kids in the school anymore, I don't have any agenda here. I just still feel that it's really lacking.
So Carol's comment was a great segue into facilities. I was very fortunate to co-chair this committee with Michael Twarty, and our members were Joe Curdo from the Board of Education, Robbie Hinton from the CSEA, and we had five parent members, Tammy Mahalik, Camille Linsen, Josh Hammond, Mike Ginjulis, and Pam Gunther. And as you've heard all of the other committees report out, there was kind of an underlying mention of facilities, whether it be the garden, or learning beyond the school walls, or using the community. And that is what we spent a lot of time talking about. I'd have to admit, our conversations were a little more concrete, not, no pun intended. But we ended up, we ended up talking a lot about strategies, because really, we have the facilities we have, what are we going to need in the future? How can we leverage what we have? How can we work within what we have? And what is out there that we could also make use of?
So we had facilities for facilities. We had the double whammy, everybody, but we did it. We got it, right, Mike?
That's right.
So, first thing that we thought is we have to conduct a study. What do we have? Pam brought up the point of, you know, the Students for Square footage. What is it? What are the demographics going to look like in five, 10 years? What are we projecting into so we can make proper planning? So we felt like we needed a little bit more information. We don't have that information or answers for you, just to let you know. But we want to figure it out. So if we did additions and expansions, we would always have to go back to, does this meet our facilities guiding principles? If we needed a module, let's make it environmentally friendly. Again, is it, you know, can our community collaborate on this? Can they give us guidance? So how to tie it all in together? Want to add something, Mike?
Well, like, for example, like room redesign, too. It's been said that now with the maker space, I said it right this time, maker space, right? Okay. It's really brought out a whole new world in learning. Kids are coming in there and they're loving it, and they're learning from a whole different perspective. So that's what we're looking at as far as room redesign, using our current spaces more efficiently for the children. And again, that's also along the lines of aesthetically.
No, as a structure, do we have the appropriate facilities to meet all the needs and the things we want to do? And that's a very, very powerful question right now, because it's, there's a lot more traction, a lot more discussion about, should we, should we return to the original plan of the high school at this point and be looking at bringing some new things into the high school itself? Do we have classrooms? Do we have the other things that we need to have a viable high school for the next decade?
Right now, I feel like we're really kind of spread thin. I mean, right, naval merit is totally, totally being used. We don't have any extra space anywhere for, like, when we need to have meetings or boardrooms or things like that. I think that's not a big thing in itself, but it would be nice for the children to have their own gym up here, their own, have their high school be a high school. Right now, it's not a high school.
All right, now it's my turn.
Well, I'm just going to talk very quickly about creating the goals. What we did is we compiled a huge amount of data, we put it together and looked for common themes and commonalities, and from that, we were able to wordsmith some goals that we're going to present to you now. One of the things we were talking about prior to this meeting was how most of the committees could probably read each of the goals and hopefully see themselves in it and see the reflection of their work in the goals that were created tonight. So Robert?
So I, my name's Robert Hendricks. I'm with the Educational Legacy Planning Group. I came to you via the Council of School Superintendents. And I had the privilege of working with the community over the last, I guess it's like five months. We had, I was amazed at the commitment of the group, of all of the groups, how well-attended it was for all of the four sessions, even through some severe weather. We had some below-zero temperatures on several of the nights, but everybody was amazing. And the rich conversations that we had were great. I was able to videotape much of what went on and listen to it back. The reason why I do that, there's a couple of reasons. One, so there's an archive of that, but also so that I can get a sense, a real sense of what the language is in a community. Sometimes, you know, I'll be in three school districts in one day, and sometimes I don't know where I end up. But then when I go back to the video and I, and I listen, it immerses me back into the community, it really helps me a great deal. So I had the privilege of doing this, some great people, some incredible ideas, some real high-level thinking in this community, which was very impressive. So what we did is we looked at all of the information and looked at, where were the common elements? Where did we hear the themes over and over again, from week to week? And at times, it became repetitive. But repetitive is good, because when you start getting repetitive, what you're doing is you're establishing foundational ideas. And so the goal statements that we then brought to the administrative team, there were about, I think I came in with about 18 of them, something like that, or 16 or something like that. And we together refined them into 10 goal statements, so we'll look at them now. They're draft goals, and they will be draft goals until the Board of Education actually adopts them. But here's goal number one. Ensure that teaching and learning strategies are aligned K-12 to maintain a collaborative, professional environment where best and next practices are discovered and shared while fully implementing common core initiatives that provide rigor and relevance, along with deep thinking, reflection, and innovation. Okay, so if you meet that goal the next five years, you're done. That's all you need. Okay, see you later. No, there's nine more. But that's a big one. And really, that, probably that reflects a lot of the discussion over the, over the four weeks of discussing these issues. But we're not done. Nurture a collaborative, professional environment that builds the capacity of the staff through ongoing professional development that is sustainable and embedded in structure, culture, and climate, while providing time to think, plan, and collaborate. One of the things that I should, I should note is that some of these, these little phrases like embedded in structure, those phrases were really born right out of the process. So what you're seeing in each of these goals is some of the language that actually came from the groups. Of course, what I had to do was take all five groups and make it, make it clear. What we didn't want to do is have one goal just for extracurricular activities, or one goal for facilities. We wanted to try to create the goals so that all of them had something to do with all the discussions that were happening throughout those five groups. Number three, foster and support an ongoing passion for teaching and learning through the implementation of authentic, project-based experiences that promote engagement, motivation, and deep learning, deeper learning, and provide diverse career, civic, and educational opportunities. One of the things that, one of the themes ongoing through the four weeks was this issue of authentic learning. Not only authentic learning, but also authentic assessments and how that could be achieved on a greater level here in the district. Number four, provide the space, tools, and capacity to grow and change as needed to meet the demands of the learner in a campus where technology is ubiquitous and access is available to all. These classroom supports will foster multiple learning styles and fit the needs of all students. Five, support the creation of and implementation of learner profiles that inform and address social, emotional, and academic needs of the student. That's another big one, and you can see how that really augments number one. This is really how to do it, and so again, this, this will change as you develop strategies for this. This will change teaching and learning here in the district. Maintain and enhance robust and diverse, a robust and diverse platform of educational and extracurricular opportunities and effectively communicate the availability to all students K-12. Ensure that extracurricular activities nurture qualities of leadership, social, and civic responsibility, and a spirit of curiosity, discovery, and entrepreneurial problem-solving. Seven, embrace the concept of campus that allows students to engage in learning through travel to the community and beyond, physical or virtual travel, promoting opportunities year-round, both on campus and in the community. A lot of discussion was had about community, as you saw in the videotape, and how the greater community, the wider community can be the super campus, if you will, for your high school students especially. Develop a financial plan that is both fiscally and educationally responsible, creating greater efficiencies through shared services and stronger relationships with municipalities and neighboring school districts, while tapping into new revenue sources. Create a long-range facilities plan that will begin to wa, or match the buildings and the classrooms to the dynamic vision of the community and students, ensuring a safe, efficient, collaborative, and inspiring place to learn. And finally, sustain ongoing two-way communication with the community to make it an integral, integral part of any future initiatives and foster an understanding of the living strategic vision for our schools. So there are your 10 goals, the result of nearly a year of work of your staff and community. And I think, I think you'll agree that they are very, very powerful. And they're, they're high-level, they're not, they're not small goals, they're lofty goals, some of which can be accomplished in the short term, many of which or most of which will only be accomplished through the next five years to 2020. So what's next? The next steps after adoption. We showed this graphic already, but we want to make sure that those of you who are involved in this process, you spent a lot of time talking not just about goals, but about strategies. I'm going to show you the report in just a moment, just to give you a sense of what the report looks like. But the report includes all of the ideas and strategies that the subcommittees talked about. So as you, as the administration and whomever is involved with the action steps, what you might call the action plan, all of those, all of those discussions will be informed by the information provided through these subcommittees. So it's not starting from scratch, so much work has already been done, and you'll be able to put action plans in place very quickly. Just want to give you a sense of what the report looks like for everybody, so that you can see what's included in the report. So it starts, of course, with the introduction and what the process, where it started from. And then it goes a little bit into the four questions, and finally, the subcommittees, the list of those who are involved. But then, then it goes into the draft goals, and then, this is what I wanted to show you, the, all the subcommittee work. So you'll see underneath the subcommittee, for example, extracurricular, you'll see all of the results of essential question one, two, three, and four. And also, embedded in the document that can be downloaded are these, these videos that you saw. So if you just press on that, so this is an interactive PDF document where if you download it onto your computer, you can actually.
One of the things that we always talked about was that.
See the videos. So, there it is. Dr. Bowers?
So at this point, if anybody has any questions from the board, and then if the board wishes the community, we'll be happy to answer them.
I'll just start with a big congratulations to Dr. Bowers and everybody that worked on the plan. I mean, it's really comprehensive, and I really appreciate everybody's time and energy. And I know it wasn't even just these meetings that everyone went to. I mean, there was a lot of work that went on outside of those meetings, especially for the administration. And so, thank you for your work. I think that the fruits are in the labor. I think that it's a really great, substantial, covers everything, plan. So that's what I'd like to start by saying. I have some questions, but I don't know if you guys want to go first. Peggy, do you have any?
No, I mean, I was, I was there. I mean, I thought that the, that it really represented, you know, really very well, like what came through the different meetings. And what was also really interesting, just one other comment, is how much consensus there was, even though the committees had these really different FOCI, like college and career, teaching and learning, facilities. It was amazing at the meetings how, given the question, people would really, you'd hear these same things across all the subcommittees. I mean, there was a lot, there was a lot of agreement and overlap that really emerged organically. Just, so that's, that's the only thing. No questions, just that comment.
Yeah, it's, thanks very much to everybody. Especially thanks to Robert for helping steer this in the right direction. It's a very impressive piece of work, all in all. And these 10 goals, I think, I mean, they're going to keep us busy. They're going to keep us focused. I think, you know, this is what we were looking for, something that would guide us in the right direction, not just next year, but, but for the next five years. And this is something that, because, and there's no timeline associated with any of these goals, and I think that's on purpose. But I think there's work in every one of those to keep us busy, certainly for the next five years. So, so it's definitely a very impressive piece of work. Thanks very much to everybody who participated. And I think we did get a fairly good cross-section of the community, but I know that because the meetings were held at 6:00 PM, it did make it difficult for people who, you know, were working in the city, or just, or for whatever reason couldn't, couldn't get there for that time. So I hope that we'll be able to get this posted and get the word out that this plan is up there in draft form, and we really want people to look at it and examine it closely and come back to us with suggestions or comments. You know, maybe we forgot something, or maybe there's some disagreement on some particular aspect that we hadn't noticed. There's a lot of people who participated, but there's a lot more who haven't had a chance to participate. So I hope that in the next couple of weeks, we can get the word out and see if we can make that happen before we go ahead and adopt this. But it certainly looks to be a great piece of work, and I'm excited to see it come to a conclusion.
Evan, do you?
Yeah, I guess just a comment and a question, and maybe you can, you know, it was great, this was great, first of all. I thought the way the conversation brought the community together to talk about it, and it's definitely something that should be done every five years. So that is great. So my, my comment is just in general, I mean, when you look at the goals, the, would this be considered an issue in the sense of, as great as they are, and we want to move in that direction, the problem with the goals are that when we walk out of here in 10 minutes, and I said to Jen and Peter and Peggy, so tell me the 10 goals. Oh, it would be, okay, something to do with fiscal and something to do with professional development, they wouldn't be able to really, you know, you know, recite the goals, okay? Not that you have to memorize them, but they're just, they're very wordy, they're very complicated. So there's not that just one thing that just jumps out of the page, you know? So I don't know if you want to comment on that. And then, and then the second thing is, like, do we have like a baseline in the sense of, like, if I was to give this to the administrators right now and say, give me evidence that the district does these, they could probably significantly impress us by saying, oh, we do, we do like number seven, embrace the concept of a campus that allows students to engage in learning through travel to community and beyond. They rattle off all those wonderful trips we do from, from seventh grade, eighth grade, ninth grade, all the great trips and all the day trips. And so is there a baseline, so like, you know, whereas five years from now, they come back and say, yeah, we travel, we go to Washington DC, we go to New Orleans, you know? In the sense of, a lot of this stuff, they could sit here and say, look how great we do already. I mean, am I missing, so is there a baseline to say, okay, well, the district is currently doing this, we want to now move it up? Because a lot of this stuff is already being done.
Sure. Oh, I hope so. A couple of things, let's, let's.
Excuse me, grab the mic.
Sure. This one?
I guess.
I guess the, the first question relates to kind of that elevator speech. And goals aren't for that. Goals are directing an organization from an executive level. What, what is that, is your vision. Now, I don't know what your vision is, I, I, but typically, a process like this starts with mission and vision. Mission is who you are. When you come to work, that's the baseline. That's, that's, we're not going to fall below that line. And your vision becomes that forward-thinking statement as to who you want to be. So when you, it's, it's inferred then that it's not, it's not the, the organization you are, it's the organization you're going to become. Your goals then become the, the steps toward that vision. And so these goals are directly related to how this district is going to run, how the district is going to focus its resources. And so in all of those 10, maybe absent two or three, like the facility study, you have done some work, right? And so there are, there are action items that you could put under, under there and, and justify, well, this is what we've done. Now what you're going to do is take those goals and look at what you're doing, and you look at the goal and say, okay, here's what we're doing. Do we want to stay with that, those strategies? Do we want new strategies? Are they working? And how, and if they are working, this is one of the ways we're going to meet that goal in the next five years. So, so now it's, it's getting down to the granular level. So your vision is big. It's the elevator speech. Your, your goals are the next step down, and they are the big overarching statements, but they're measurable and they're attainable. And now you have to decide how you're going to attain them. In some ways, without question, you will attain those goals in the same way that you're attaining them now. For example, when, when all of you get together, you may not even realize how you're using the community as the wider campus. Now you're going to coalesce that information and say, do we have to do more, or do we continue with that strategy? Now that becomes your action plan. Now you measure them and yourselves based upon whether you're going to, to meet that through that action plan. So a year from now, or two years from now, you're going to measure that goal based upon that. So there's a lot of work to be done, it's all the granular work, and yes, it is true that you're going to assess what you're already doing, and, and I guarantee you, when you do that, you're going to be sitting around tail saying, yeah, we do that, but that doesn't work. We need to do better. How are we going to do better? That becomes now your action plan for that goal. Does that answer the question?
Yeah, thank you.
And I'd like to respond to and share a little bit of information. One of the things that was given to the Board of Education tonight was a one-page document that actually brings the entire process, which will be posted online tomorrow, brings the entire process from the discovery process to the 10 goals that we just shared on one page. And the top pages, at the top of the page, gives the vision elements, what we actually came up with as the result of the discovery process, the three categories that we divided our vision elements in, and two statements under each of those vision elements. And then it goes to the essential questions, and then to the, the goals. This is a living document, and I would anticipate that every board retreat, every retreat that we have with the administrators and the opening days of the school year, these are the focal points of the conversation. And each year, we're going to expand and move beyond. So the good news is, we already have a great school district here, now we're refining it, and each year, we'll figure out the direction it goes. It's a living document, and it's one that probably will be replicated in the next five-year period. But it's, it's all in the journey. Hopefully, I, we will never arrive, or we'll never, the intent will never be to arrive. It's always to refine and, and to move to the next level.
So Diana, could you just talk a little bit more about that? I think that the goals are, how do we make sure that the goals aren't this, this process that then gets kind of like put on a shelf and forgotten about, right? How do we make these part of our day, part of our decisions? How does, how does the board do that? How do the administrators do that, the parents? How do we make it something that we constantly, you know, refer to? And, can you just talk a little bit about that?
So the next two steps, and there was a, a document that showed the goals, and then the action plan, and the, the measurable elements within those. So when we begin the year, next year, with both the board retreat and the administrators' retreat, and then opening day, the question is, what is the action plan? And how are we going to actually create a plan that will allow us to begin to move in that direction? And then there needs to be measurable outcomes. And one of the things that's very important in any kind of strategic plan is that you have a way to measure where you're going and whether or not you've met your goal. And you may not always get to the point that you hope to by the end of the year, but then, because it's a living document, you, you recalibrate, and you discuss, and you come up with a new action plan. And so I would anticipate, just as I know the district has in the past, the way the district will respond in the future is to begin each year with these focal points as our, our measures. And they may change, and we may refine, and they will then be the, the next stage to the five-year plan after this one, in the year 2020, if you can believe it, in the five-year plan. And so that will be where we start next time.
And so in between now and board adoption, this will be on the website for people to look at? The whole, like, the whole thing that we just saw, or just the, the goals?
Well, this document, this one-page document will be available for review. The PowerPoint that was just presented will be available for review, and also the strategic plan, this document, which is, has all of the subcategories and the subcomponents from each of the five groups, and the four essential questions will also be available.
Great.
So that's the PDF that Robert scrolled through earlier with the embedded videos? That would be great.
Right. So all three documents will be available, and people can comment, people can ask questions, and we can go from there.
So what is the process for people to, to comment? Because my, like, my understanding or my memory of haldaneschools.org is that there's not a comment feature, so, and, and there is a pretty short turnaround. The goal is for the board to vote by June 16th. What is a process to get community feedback? I mean, do you want people to be emailing? I mean, I really don't know what the best way to, to do that would be.
Well, there are two ways. One would be to go onto my blog, which will also house all three documents. The information will be there at a link, and a link, it'll be embedded in my blog, which they can respond to, or we can invite them to email. And so however they choose to do that. But there, there are ways that they can communicate now through my blog.
And hopefully, we can schedule some time at our June 2nd meeting to, for public comment.
That would be great.
Public comment is also always welcome, but we can specifically allocate one, one portion of the meeting for, for feedback on the plan.
Sure.
And then the board is planning to vote on the June 16th, at the June 16th meeting. So there's a few weeks for comment, and discussion, and digestion. Yeah. Do we want to change the tape? Is there more to?
That was, once the question and answer session is over, that's it for tonight.
Okay. Does anybody have any comments from the, from the public, from the helpers, from the Anything further from the board?
No?
I have a couple, yeah, other quick comments. Once again, I'd like to reiterate how, how meaningful I think these, these 10 goals are. And I hope that everybody sees the conversations and their committee work reflected in these. And I think, I, I, as we were going through, I think we all can see the conversations that occurred that created these goals, and that's what it should be, it should be a reflection of what happened. I'd also like to thank Robert as a great partner through the process.
Thank you. This was great. I enjoyed it very, very much.
Yeah. Everybody else who took part in it, you know, this is, this is a really a community effort, and it takes a village, and here's our village. So thank you.
Great. Okay, motion to adjourn.
Motion? Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, everyone.